Something. Ready? All right, everybody, I'm calling this meeting of the Woodcreek City Council that ordered for regular meetings July 10th, 24th, 6:30 PM. And we are in order, so I will ask everyone to sit down for a moment and remain standing for a little bit. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. This is your ready. Secretary, you'd be so kind as to call the rule.
Mr. Mayor DeFranco.
Here.
Mayor Plachen Denver Heinz.
Here.
Councilmember Laniya Bailey.
Here.
Councilmember Chris Kramer.
Here.
Councilmember Bob Hamrick.
Here.
Councilmember Christopher.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Our four.
Sure.
How many votes come in?
Nobody signed up, sir.
All right. Then our first item on this business is the consent agenda.
May I?
Yes. I move to approve item one, two, and four of the consent agenda and move item three into the regular agenda.
Okay.
Are there any objections? We'll do that. So we will vote on the consent agenda, including items one, two, and four. Oh. Oh.
John.
Show hands.
Hi.
In that, or if through. All right, reports from officers in council liaison. First is council member Bailey.
Reporting on the infrastructure and mobility plan panel. We had requested they had requested a study of trail for the trade cost of some five thousand. They also would ask for a reserve to put the design for road maintenance. But we get to figure out the logistics of that. And we also have the bad news in that our chair, Craig Biggs, resigned at the end of the meeting because he had some unspecified health problem. And then this morning, Lydia Johns also resigned. She was our vice chair. She ended critically person on the committee because she thought we had an open heart surgery August 17th. And she just found out this morning. So we are going to be looking for more members for the panel and.
And our prayers.
And our prayers.
Right.
Yeah. So. And that's about it.
And what were the numbers?
Twenty-five thousand for a trail study. We talked about putting in trails. This would be to define, you know, where the utilities are and where our easements lie. That's what we're hoping to accomplish. They also asked to set aside seventy-five thousand in a year in a type of sinking fund to reserve for road maintenance. We have reserves from the bond, but want to make sure that it's it's held so that when we do need to repair the roads, we can do it in time then.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilmember Hamrick for Parks and Recreation?
Yes, if you could, the first thing is 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 the bids. And what I have is, I think I gave it to you last time, you may have seen it. The Parks and Rec Board had two options that they wanted to consider. They wanted you to consider. Not what they only had an opinion about two of them. The others they they didn't, but I'll talk a little bit about them as well. So right now we spend a hundred and seventy-five dollars a month on on our porta potty. That's twenty-five dollars a week for service and thirty-five dollars for the porta potty itself. If we were to buy a porta potty, just like those, and I've seen, I've looked at them on the internet. They would cost somewhere about two thousand dollars for a porta potty that's let ADA approve. You can spend up to thirty-five hundred dollars for the same porta potty. We talked a little bit about what what it looks like, and they've considered something like sheathing if you're putting some either lattice or horizontal wood on three sides and turn the porta potty ninety degrees so that the door faces into the park and is much more attractive compared to just the way it looks now. So two thousand dollars plus a hundred dollars a month was what approximately what it would cost if we were to do it that way. The other option that they have is, you can see in the handout, is a much more permanent looking one that they say would have to be according to to the committee. It would have to be at the back of the property. It couldn't be in the front of the property. So you can see it's a pretty big facility, if you want to call it that, basically eighty-one by ninety, and I think there's more, which you include the the ramp. So they've seen it for as much as about ninety-five hundred dollars with possible coupons, bring it down to sixty-five hundred. But none of that includes any of the plumbing that would be required because it's at the back of the property. It would have to have a water supply and an egress of sewer, basically, out to the street. And that would be, we don't know exactly what, there's an undetermined amount of money for that. So that would be, it could be anywhere from twelve to fifteen thousand dollars is my best guess based on what we know about that kind of money, plus the possibility of losing another tree to to get it in place. So those are the two. If you look at this one, this is the very nice, and we've seen it before. It's a nice facility. We'd have to use a fork with to get it in there. Now, I also talked to Cody about the Cadillac, which is about ninety thousand dollars. And and it's from a company up in near Fort Worth. But we'd have to get a gigantic crane to get that piece in. And that's actually a hundred thousand dollars with ninety with ten thousand ops if we got it to be divided. So just to sum that part up, really, the two that that the Parks and Rec Board is considering is either a you can continue with what we have, you can buy enough and porta potty and have it serviced monthly, or we can go with this other one that that costs about ninety-five hundred. With a possible coupon, make it sixty-five hundred and then plumbing on top of that. So those are the total costs.
And they only review pre-bab?
That's all they were interested in looking at. So that's what I what I had. As far as as our parks and where where we are at this point. I, one of these that we that we talked about way back on December thirteenth. I had fifteen at that meeting was using the money from our spectacular February the possibles possible costs for the Eagle Scott project. Now, the Eagle Scott project is basically not going to cost anything. Once, and and it's placed right now is they're going to start working on on Saturday, this coming Saturday. And so our young man Billy and his dad and several other people are going to be there to to begin the project and get it moving. It'll be just to the west of the Bachi Ball Court. And it's did I give you all? I have a long list that covers thousands, thousand forty-five dollars. And that is covers all the building things that they they need, but they will all be provided by INFP and the courts. Just yesterday, through that, had a meeting with a couple of the folks on the committee and they they fleshed that part out. They also told them that if they need any more money to finish the project, that I'm sure that we could be able to supply that the additional funds, but it would be very minimal in terms of doing that. So as far as the other things in the park, the Butterfly Garden is going to start in the next week or so. Claire, just to clarify, Claire is the master naturalist, is giving up her services for free. And she has some ladies that are going to be helping her as well to do that. So between the Butterfly Garden and the rest of the southern end of the park, that will pretty much complete the park, Augusta Park. And people are actually using it. Kids love to play there, even though it looks like adult stuff, kids like to go there and play. All of the the equipment for the ping pong tables is there, ping pong paddles and balls and and the the golf putting, the putters are there, the golf balls are there. Everything, the scoring is in place. So basically what we have is everything set in the south part of park has to be completed at this point. Everything else is pretty much done. I was there yesterday and I was pretty impressed as well with it. With Creekside, all we have left is not, oh, the port money, that's about it.
Landbird is not ADA compliant. The entire playground is not ADA compliant.
So what are you saying?
It has to have landbird sun to make the ramps and things usable so that somebody with a wheelchair could actually get into the park and use the park.
So for ADA, landbird.
And the triangle needs it as well, but it's mentioned in the the proposal coming up later. And then Augusta, I believe, based on what you said tonight, their landbird should be at us.
They're going to be doing a mulch on in the rainwater area to keep it natural. They're not going to leave it just as dirt. So and even right up against the walls, I suppose there's going to be some mulch there as well. So it's going to be the the three parks, it's the rustic one. And the rest are are going to be, you know, much more marred in terms of the way they work. Let's see, let's see if I missed anything. You know, we still have to do some science as well. I think they've been ordered, but not absolutely positive.
Chris?
I was curious as when we plan on getting the plans for the changes made to the original plan. The reason being, it should be noted that one of the reasons councils were requesting these updated plans regarding the changes made to our city parks that utilize the POSAC funds is that we need to send any changes made to what was presented to the county for approval to get the grant back to the county to, oh, I guess it's not Mark Kennedy anymore for approval for those changes to the plan that they approved for funding. I think they would probably expect that the new plans that show the changes that were made, that they approved, would be a similar or same level of original plans submitted to them. So the request from council regarding the plan changes to the park improvements is twofold. Council needed to have the approved changes, they needed to approve the changes, but so that they could send those to the Hayes County for approval. Because the county needs to approve the changes to the plan that they were originally adopted. And given the wording of the communication back in January twenty twenty-three with Mark Kennedy, that approval of changes needed to any plan was to, quote, prior to work being done, unquote. If anyone's interested, Woodcreek has an interlocal agreement with Case County regarding the POSAC funds.
So primarily, you're talking about the the deck, pretty much, that that they showed up to, because everything else is pretty much as was planned.
Right, that's that would that would seemingly be, yes. So here's everything that we that we sent you that you approved. Here are the things that changed out of that plan. You know, we took out the deck. We, you know, did this, we didn't do that, you know, here's here's all of it, just for the record. Now, when we went to them before and had them about making changes to the plan, I mean, the county said, you know, if it's still within, I mean, if you still put it in playground equipment, stuff like that, you know, fine, no problem. I mean, you said it was going to be green and it's brown. So yeah, and so there there's some latitude there, but we still need to get the county that here's what it was, here's how it ended up, any problem.
Yeah, and Mark, back in those communications a long time ago when I was asking that very question, Mark, you know, said absolutely, just send it to us, you know, and we happy to approve it. But the stipulation was that if we were making changes to the plans that was submitted to them, we'd have to resubmit these new versions of the plans for their approval. And most likely it's going to be just a sign up on it, you know, they have to have it. But so council has to have it first, we approve it, and then we send it off to Hayes County, and then they approve it, and now we can all just go forward and then, okay.
So we're primarily talking about the debt, correct?
The debt and.
No, all changes to the plan.
Take a look at the original proposal that went through the county that had everything specked out.
Okay.
And anything that's changed from that, this needs to be done.
That whole proposal essentially needs to be recreated. So all those specs, if they change, meaning, oh, we cut the deck and we bought these five things, it has to be itemized out. Not total, just total, I mean, but also the item. And it can't be reimbursed cement to Pat Rawlings. It has to be reimbursement for the length sand or whatever, right, that he purchased. And then if there were design changes, which we know there were, they those new design plans have to be submitted. And what that doesn't align with was what was in the packet because they acknowledged that they even changed beyond those design, the original change in plan. Does that make sense? So they're on like the third or fourth change now, and we need whatever that is to be mapped out, itemized in display.
And that's what you know you have asked for already. So all that needs to be done is presented to parks, say, hey, this is your, this is the project we'd like from you. And create new plans, which they've discussed, it's like, hey, yeah, we need to update our physical site plan with for all these different changes. And then bring that back to council on the regular agenda.
Yeah, it has me action item.
So I'll take it back to the Parks, Parks and Rec Advisory Board and have them begin to make these changes and bring it back to me.
So, yes, we've already asked for that.
Yes.
So you just take that motion and break it to them and.
Good. Any other questions? Comments?
May I add to my report? I was struggling to try to manipulate my brand new wonderful computer, but I I looked at an important part of the INF committee report. I'm just going to read here from the summary. North-south portion of Deerfield Drive has qualified to receive a community development block grant. The grant has many phases as the government award. In the meantime, second section of the road that will be impacted is worn from use and is an inconvenience to the residents on the street due to multiple loopholes. The INF panel was tasked with reviewing the possibility of stashing the road. So it was agreed, a motion was passed to perform road surface patchwork on the north-south section of Deerfield Drive utilizing street maintenance funds not to exceed six thousand dollars. Passed unanimously and hopefully that can begin.
You placed an item on the agenda, Chris.
Right, there's there's.
All right, we'll move on to planning the zoning commission.
Thank you, Mayor. P and Z had a second meeting on July third. P and Z has sent several recommendations to council, and those recommendations are part of the following regular agenda section so that council can accept them and take possible action on them. Vice Chair Lydia Johns placed the acceptance of the chair's resignation on the purely agenda to give the members, including the new members, the opportunity to to start considering before their next meeting who they would like to consider as nominating as their chair. The topic of rezoning the triangle to a city park was broken out into two recommendations from P and Z. One was an item to take the rezoning action, and one one item was to call for a joint public hearing with council. These recommendations have been combined and are covered with item twelve in the regular section of this agenda. Both of these recommendations were unanimously passed at the July third P and Z meeting. Though this property hasn't previously been zoned at all, our city attorney says that the process would be the same as a regular rezoning process, meaning that both P and Z and council would need to hold public hearings, as well as the required notices to be sent out, required report from P and Z before council can consider taking action to rezone the triangle into a city park. The preliminary class of lots of nine A and nine, or eleven A in the Oaks Orchard enclave was also unanimously approved by P and Z. This recommendation, as a recommendation to council, which you will find on item ten in the regular agenda section of this meeting. P and Z also sent their biannual review of the comprehensive plan for council to consider, which you will find with item thirteen of the regular agenda for council to consider.
Any questions to council member Berman? All right, quick report by city staff that I'm love.
Do you have a question?
Please, no, I just, we're aware that Lydia Johns is going to resigning after the next.
I haven't heard of it. You you just told brought me into the.
Okay.
Our Mr. Burton is on vacation. He's not here to give a staff report, so I'll be letting you know what he had, which is first on the TM, the Texas Division of Emergency Management and Federal Emergency Management Agency funds, expenditures and reimbursements from the twenty twenty-three winter storm event. Submitting, the city submitted a total of two hundred fifty-five thousand, three hundred eighty-four dollars and forty cents in expenses to FEMA. TM issued a payment of one hundred ninety-one thousand, eight hundred ninety-four dollars and fifty-five cents on June twentieth, which brings this matter to the close. And then the second item is updated on finances on check register. We have not had check registers posted to the website or updated in in a while. And so so those check registers have now been have been created. They've been posted to the website and give Taffia a gold star. She went to the new website and posted them there too. So in advance, so they're up to date as of June. So we are, we are in full line. Oh, I take it back. There is a, there's an asterisk. There were a couple of, I think it was I think about three months and twenty-three between the start of this fiscal year and like the end of the last fiscal year where the numbers were still kind of shaking, wrapping up. So I, so those are still missing up to up to twenty twenty-three check registers. But twenty twenty-four is up to date from October through October through June, although October, November, December are actually in the twenty twenty-three folder because they're posted by calendar year rather than our. Any questions on those? All right, we'll move to the regular agenda. First item on the regular agenda, item number three, which minutes from the June twenty-sixth meeting, which we're going to have in the central agenda.
Governor Berman. I move to approve the meeting minutes from June twenty-sixth with council's edits. On page twenty-seven of the packet, item two of the June twenty-sixth meeting minutes, remove the paragraph regarding a motion to have the Parks Board recommendations show on the next agenda as a regular agenda item. I made no motion as it's a report section of the agenda and motions cannot be made there. I simply made a request and request does not need to be part of our minutes. On page twenty-nine of the packet, item six. The first sentence should simply read, the mayor moved to not pick up this item and move it to the next agenda without objection. And then after that, it should simply say, council member Bailey objected. After the motion was made, and second, there is where it states that in person and public or in person and email public comments were recorded but not permitted, it should instead read, due to this item being tabled, all public comments were also tabled with the item per city attorney instruction. On page thirty-five of the packet, under council considerations, it should read under council member Richardson's introductions, report from the tree board.
Oh. Is that, yeah, all right. Any discussion? Questions? All right, so we will vote on the motion to approve the minutes of June twenty-sixth with those edits by council. Show hands. On favor, say aye.
All right. Did you email those to Suzanne?
I got a lot of words.
Okay.
I was like, I just lost, got lost.
Sorry. I will.
Will you copy me?
Okay.
Okay, item number nine is to discuss and take possible action on the infrastructure mobility panel recommendation on the road surface patchwork. So take that one, council member Bailey.
Okay, and I have read briefly what the panel had discussed and approved. So I move that we take action to approve the recommendation of the infrastructure and mobility panel regarding performance of road surface patchwork on the north-south section of Deerfield Drive not to exceed six thousand dollars.
My second.
I have a question. So the recommendation from the engineer was that this be included in a larger bid package for economy and scale with the safety enhancement program. Because this patchwork could likely be done by the same company doing the resurfacing of the east-to-west portion. Without hearing their motion again, I'm a little concerned that we're removing the engineering and the design and the bid. Does that make sense?
Okay, the full impact, Aaron Jones, who has this supervisor role, road repair for Hayes County. I talked to him and that was one of his suggestions. I was asking him who they recommended for this kind of work, and he just mentioned that it might be wise economically to have the same company that does the east-west section of the property also do the patchwork. The INF committee considered that, but it may take a while before that work is agreed upon, put out to bid, finished in maybe October. And they felt that this was important enough to go forward with it once we get in it within a reasonable thing, you know, if we could do it under this though.
So back to my point, though, is that when Logan, as it stands, does not designate anyone to address the scope of work or create a bid package, because we still actually have to go out because of the total, even if it is six grand, and even if we have it in the budget, we still have to solicit no less than three bits.
Okay.
So we we still have to give direction to develop a package, scope of work, estimates, have that posted for people or solicit directly, probably both. Have that work done.
So what is the threshold for going out to bid?
Five thousand.
Five thousand, because what we discussed, and maybe now it's gone beyond that scope, is that it's about three thousand and two pallets, which should be sufficient for the asphalt needs, and that Sean might be doing the patching.
Oh, no, that is not what they're requesting. Deerfield was pretty specific. They would like to see patchwork at a more, well, also the the degradation over there is so significant that bags of asphalt will not service the area. This is also why we wanted Freeland Turcan involved on that, because we really need somebody to assess, like, what level of patch we're going to do while we wait on the grant.
Right.
Right, so nobody's actually assessed that and given. So nobody's actually assessed that and given us an actual estimate. Whenever we use, what we used, that six grand originally in the original motion, I wasn't here to advocate for, was just because we knew that already within our budget, chances are this is actually gonna get up to like fifteen thousand. Just maybe more.
Just for the.
Yeah, because if you look at what we estimated for all those little tiny cul-de-sacs back in the day, you know what I mean? This is the kind of the same scale of work that we were estimating back then. So they were like ten grand a piece-ish, a lot, some of them were actually smaller road sections than this. So I'm just saying, I support this item, obviously, because I originally brought it. But I'm concerned about the motion as it stands, and I would like to make some amendments to it, but I would also maybe need you to reread it.
Okay, um, the most of the amendments I, I made was.
You referenced them, and it's their comment that I'm.
Yeah.
Okay.
It was to approve the recommendation of the, of the infrastructure mobility panel. To do the road service repair on the north-south side, not the city side of Melbourne.
Yeah, so what's their, to follow the recommendation, what was their recommendation?
The performing road service patchwork on north-south section of Deerfield Drive utilizing street maintenance funds not to exceed six thousand.
But I said, I need to amend that to.
Okay, but one of the reasons we were still, they're cognizant of the fact that this will be for one year and then a problem or less, and then it will be torn out. So, uh, we want it repaired, but we, we're not making a permanent patch here.
Can I ask a question regarding, does anyone know where we are in the process of Turk going to maybe east-west, like building that package?
He's working on that, they're paying them. Well, I mean, whether it's gonna be next week or, or, I mean, we, I mean, that was gonna be my recommendation is, you know, this, this doesn't say go out for bid or anything else, they just said, do the work.
Yeah.
So whether we do the work under Freeland Turk's supervision or whether we go off on our own is not specified.
We need to specify.
So we need to specify that, that we work with Freeland Turk to do this and to expedite it as possible.
I would like to issue an amendment that we direct Freeland Turk to develop the bid package for the scope of work.
Like, that's already in their scope. They're already developing the package for the north-south.
For the patches?
Yes, through what authorization?
Through their test list number two.
Council has not authorized them to take that on. They might be doing it based on how this item was brought forth. I was not here to advocate for it. So what I'm saying is, is it is possible Freeland Turk has started this work? Because they understood that council potentially wanted to move forward with this, right? And they did a lot of the preliminary work to be able to present the item. It got moved to I N M panel for review and discussion. I N M panel, sounds like they approve it as well. So what I'm saying is, council actually still needs to authorize Freeland Turk to move forward with developing a bid package for this work. That's my amendment.
My second.
See, I have a question of the mayor, maybe. What was the scope of the work in Freeland Turk's twenty-thousand-dollar contract? Was that for, or maybe Jim was.
It's, I mean, it is, it is work all over town. Radar signs, that work. Um, it's a, it's a, it's a pretty good package. Um, but a, a lot of it is the whole work on Deerfield, whether it's east-west side or the patching that we said, well, you know, if we're gonna do the patching, and that should be part of that whole deal or expediency sake. You know, let's take a look at that too. So remember, they're not, you know, they're preparing a bid package for us to approve. You know, so, so if we go in and say, no, we don't want you to do that, then it comes out of the business. You know, but they're gonna come to us, you know, with a, a package that we wanna do this, it's gonna be this much, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do this. All this, all the stuff that's on their, on their plate, you know, to get it done. And we have to approve that before we're done with that, right? So, but we can ask them to, you know, expedite, we could ask them to break out, you know, components of the package, uh, to be done. Otherwise, the whole point was to get a contractor, you know, or a couple, you know, to do, do it all. And so that we get, get the cost from, you know, fifty dollar to plus to twenty-five dollars a foot, but that's, that's the goal, is to get that, get those.
And they were online with, uh, our meeting of I N M panel yesterday.
They've been, they've been following I N M very.
So they're very aware of what our objections are.
Can I ask a question in the motion that the amendment motion, was the word expediency or?
I didn't have it.
She didn't have it.
No.
No, that was my word. But that was. I did not amend it. Yeah, that makes sense, because that's what we were really after, is from the people that we had who were sitting here last month or six weeks ago. Expediency was the watchword from them, that we, they've been kicked around, so to speak, long enough, and they wanna get the stuff done, and I can't blame them at all.
Yeah, I just don't, I don't wanna personally, to speak to expediency, yes. And I believe Freeland Turk is about done with their work, so I believe it's gonna come to us soon. I do not wanna rush patchwork and blow money for the very reason that we said, is that it won't be permanent. It is temporary, and to me, I don't see a huge delay with the east-to-west portion. Freeland Turk has yet to really delay anything for us, and I believe that it makes a hundred percent sense to have east-to-west and north-to-south patchwork at the same time, because if you just patchwork north-to-south, you still have the east-to-west portion that needs work done, that will then be waiting and kicked down the road as well. To me, it makes sense for that, where the current work that, so they don't have to wait on the grant to be done together, financially speaking.
Also, if my memory is correct, um, part of the reason that it was sent to I N M was the expression about, oh, we don't want it just to be a patch, we want I N M to review it to give us more information on what kind of patch it is like. And so I was kind of expecting that to be the recommendation back to us, was because we've already known that the citizens of Deerfield that's got here in front of us and said, uh, the city manager had said, we picked out and we put people out patches. The citizens of Deerfield said, no, those don't work right away. We don't want that. We want something more than just a, I stamp on some asphalt into a hole. So I was looking forward to hearing the more engineering, complex description of what we do with a hole in our road.
That's why we have engineers.
Yeah, right, so, but I just, that's what I was thinking we were getting today.
So with that in mind, what y'all sent on the east, I can never, I can't talk about it, it's not Mr. Jenna, I got some.
Okay, we have an amendment.
Okay, um, one more. Discussion was that, um, the east-west section probably won't be done until September.
Based on what?
We can't lay asphalt when it's hundred degrees out. Okay, work for asphalt company enough to.
Late October. All right, so the, the amendment is to authorize Freeland Turk to include the north-south patchworks as part of the bid package. Second of all, council member Berman. Any further discussion? All right, please say, I raise your hand if you approve the amendment.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Um, and so now we will vote on the main motion, um, which is to approve the recommendation of I N M um, to do the road surface maintenance, um, as amended, having Freeland Turk have prepared the. So on the, on the paper, please raise your hands, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Right, item number ten, um, is the preliminary replat of nine A and eleven A in Oak Orchard enclave, government and Berman.
I move that council combines items ten and eleven and accept the planning and zoning recommendation, and that council approves the preliminary replat of lot nine A and eleven A of the Oak Orchard enclave.
Second.
Mayor Mia, please. Beginning on page forty-eight of your packet, you will see the documents for this topic. First, you will see the recommendation from P and Z to approve this preliminary plat, and then the documents that go into the details of what council is considering today. I will ask you, council, to direct their questions to Callie Doherty, as they will be better to answer your questions on this topic. Callie, would you like to give us a little background on this replat?
Just clarifying, it's Kaylee.
Sorry. I don't ask you that.
Yeah, you're kind of Kaylee Doherty. Uh, I work with the engineering company that prepares the plat. Um, essentially, we have two pieces of property that we are just relocating the internal lot line to change the lot sizes. Both lots are already developed. Um, they are single-family lots, and they need all of the recommendations for, from the city codes. Um, I know that Mr. Berman had mentioned there was a concern about the previous coverage. Just to clarify there, the development agreement is pre-existing on this subdivision that allows a thirty-five percent in coverage total for the entire residential area, and it does not apply for a lot. The entire residential area is below the thirty percent threshold. Um, so we're in agreement with that, but there's any questions in the pocket, yes.
And so I can, if anyone feels the need to look up that regulation, it's one five six dot one two zero of the P D D that was established by ordinance.
Yes, and we did provide a copy of them to Jen Burris.
Um, what I was interested in was something that you'd given me that I didn't know about, which was, this was originally four lots.
Correct, yes, uh, when it was originally plotted as Oak Orchard enclave, it was nine, ten, eleven, and twelve. Um, at one point, nine and ten were combined, at another point, ten and eleven and twelve were combined. Um, same owner has always owned all four lots, did the two individual amended flats. And then now they are just looking to essentially modify that internal line between the two. Typically, this could be done as a replat. Um, when we did the amended plat for eleven and twelve, there was a drainage easement, there was inadvertently omitted from that amending plat, and to reestablish that easement, we had to do a replat. So, normal circumstances, it doesn't require council approval, but because of that omission, we have to go along the route.
I have a question for the city attorney. Um, this is about process. Since the original P D D is described by ordinance, does council at some point, and has the actual map of the lots and everything in the ordinance, does council in any way have to amend the ordinance at some point?
No, this sounds like a subdivision requirement, not a zoning requirement. P D D doesn't, that's zoning, has nothing to do with, um, the subdivision replat.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So the motion is to, uh, approve preliminary replat, nine, eight, and eleven A of Oak Orchard enclave. On the paper, please raise your hands, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks for coming.
Yes, thank you.
Of course.
Kaylee.
And just for clarification on my end, since you guys processed and asked preliminary replat, is there a requirement for a final replat for the rule?
Typically, yeah.
Yeah, I guess that's our process.
Yes, okay, that's, it's just very different than any other process, so I'm just trying to clarify.
Welcome to Wood Creek.
I wouldn't expect it to be too tricky.
Yeah, I was, I found that interesting that we're wording preliminary was in here.
It's the way our code was written, and we have not updated it yet.
It's not unusual for a city to have a preliminary replat. I mean, it's going out of vote, but.
Yeah, typically, when you have a preliminary and final, it's for new subdivision.
Yeah, for a brand new.
Yeah, replats are a little different.
Something to, to learn art to do this.
Yeah, so would you like to consult further? No, but I can give you a recommendation on who to talk to.
Oh, we appreciate it, thank you.
Of course.
Um, item number twelve. Also you, Mr. Berman.
Would you like to introduce the?
Yes, it's to go ahead and take possible action on the recommendation from P and Z to hold a joint public hearing with city council for the possible rezoning of the triangle from a right-of-way to a city park.
I move that council holds a joint public hearing with planning and zoning for the possible rezoning of the triangle from a right-of-way to a city park.
My second.
On page fifty-three of the packet, you'll find the planning and zoning recommendation to hold a joint public hearing. Um, this recommendation to council was made at their July third meeting. Also at this meeting, there, there first was an item regarding whether or not to take up this rezoning. On that issue, planning and zoning made a recommendation to rezone the bulk that Sean built into his city park. The last recommendation for planning zoning, um, should not be confused with a report from planning and zoning on this issue, which will come after they hold their public hearing. Today, all council is being asked to consider is holding a joint public hearing with P and Z on this topic. For reference, our local city ordinances have already included the possibility of allowing P and Z and council to hold a joint public hearing, which could be found at thirty point four three of our local ordinances. Um, I have a question to the city attorney. Could you outline the process if we were to hold a public hearing with planning and zoning? Because we've, does that negate the report part? Because we can't have, council can't hold their public hearing until we get a reply. So what happened?
No, you're holding a joint public.
Yes.
So, so the statute contemplates the joint public hearing, so it's, it's not.
So the report's gone?
The, it's already gone, but it doesn't, it doesn't require, you're having a joint public hearing, so it doesn't require you to wait until you get the report or to have a public hearing, but you can't, you can't take action for, for thirty days, I believe, is what the statute says. So you have to wait thirty days before you can actually take the rezoning action. puts a delay on, you know.
So if we didn't hold a joint hearing, we could potentially do it quicker.
Yeah, depending on how your meeting lineup, I don't know, my meeting lineup, I've got some, I've got some clients where it would be, you know, two or three months.
No.
It waited between, thirty days is not gonna make a difference.
Well, so planning and zoning would have their meeting on August seventh, and council's first meeting in August is.
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth, so if they held one on the seventh, and we held one on the fourteenth. On the fourteenth, there's a question again, I'll seduce, after we close our public hearing on the fourteenth, that council, we literally could have an actual.
Yes.
So that would be.
Thirty days there.
Yeah.
I mean, my question is, you know, we have, we have some cost savings in doing, you know, one million, one announcement, one ad, one everything. And, you know, it's been how it is for forty-five years, and, or forty, you know, and so it's thirty days going to make a difference that we can't do anything for thirty days.
Not for the cost saving, that's a selling point.
You know, it's like, it does, yeah, I mean, it's like, okay, so we never, everybody calls it a party. So does, does the thirty days make any difference?
Um, so I'd like to amend my motion to ask staff to work with P and Z chair and the mayor to set the date and time of this joint public hearing to coincide with the August P and Z meeting I was attending. And begin required process associated with holding a public hearing.
We are, the P and Z chair already resigned, and the vice chair just resigned. So there is no chair or vice chair to work with.
Then staff, now, may I rephrase? I amend to ask staff to work with the mayor to set the date and time of this joint public hearing to. Can I put a pause on this? I have a question. City attorney?
Yes.
Um, if we can't get a quorum on P and Z.
Yeah, then you can't do anything. And I was, and I was just double-checking, the thirty days doesn't come in here, it says that, um, uh, you can't take action until you receive a final report, so you would have to take action at your next regularly scheduled meeting after they provide the report.
Oh, so we.
They, yeah, they, but they probably have to meet to issue their report, so they will have to have a meeting. They, yeah, they, but they probably have to meet to issue their report, so they will have to have a meeting as well.
So, could, again, this is great, because I need to learn the process in my head. So, P and Z could technically hold a public hearing at their next meeting.
Yes, issue the report.
Come out of the public hearing, issue the report to council, and then
If council could meet at their regular scheduled meeting.
Okay, so that's not a joint.
That's not a joint, that's two separate meetings.
Kind of, I am not.
For the record, I'm not concerned about, from everything that I've heard, I am not at all concerned that it's not the zone that have taken everybody yet. So, I think it would be my preference that we do it, even if it might be a little slower by a few weeks, so we just make sure we dot our i's and cross our t's, count to the cross.
And another thing with P and Z is I know that the Dunkins are gonna be on last night. Um, so we've been covered to get, because we own the property, right? I mean, there's, there's no risk of someone trying to go in and build something that's not authorized, which is usually the only risk you have.
We did that, I bet.
Well, there you go.
We got a grant to do it, that was on the red meter.
Well, you're fine, I'm not, not too concerned.
Um, I would like to pass this as is without trying to pick dates right now. Uh, just knowing, I mean, you could set September if you wanted to try to give us an end goal. But basically, without a date, all you're doing is authorizing the public hearing to be called, and.
My motion was for a joint public hearing.
Yes, we're not just, yeah, okay, that appeals to me for cost saving. And as we just heard, it doesn't really change the timing of the process. We can still hold a joint hearing, then P and Z comes out of that joint hearing. Right, we save money doing it together, they
Make a report.
They might have a meeting right after, right? If we plan it for September, on the day they have a meeting, they could have a meeting, vote on their report, right? They might want more time to develop the report, I don't need, we don't need to brush them, and then it just comes to council naturally. But, I would say.
But we've fulfilled our commitment for a public hearing for the council.
Yes, so I think without trying to set a date on this, that all the items, and then gives the flexibility to understand that likely, there will be no P and Z meeting in August, right? And so, it would be the earliest September. Because we don't wanna call a special meeting for this, that's ridiculous.
Yeah, no, so I did not actually make an amendment, because I never got, right, I crossed it out, thank you.
So, the motion on the floor is to, is to hold a joint public hearing with city council and P and Z to discuss the rezoning or zoning of the triangle. Correct, right, so, prepare to vote. On the favor, please raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Item number thirteen is a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding the comprehensive plan biennial review.
I move to accept the planning and zoning comprehensive plan biennial review.
Second.
Mayor. Beginning on page fifty-five of the packet, you will find planning and zoning recommendation regarding the biennials review of the comprehensive plan. I would like to thank planning and zoning for their thorough review of all the elements of the Wood Creek Comprehensive Plan. And especially thank Vice Chair Lydia Johns for her efforts. For those not familiar with the compreh- what the comprehensive plan is, it is a document that has been created by the voices of our citizens through town halls and surveys with the help of specialists. Council considers this document when making our decisions so that they align with the stated goals of the citizens. I personally review this document often, and factor in all the different aspects of citizens' goals and opinions when making any decisions. I would like to bring to council's attention to the element of P and Z's recommendation, which they asked to be highlighted. The name change from Platinum Panel to Infrastructure and Mobility, found on page fifty-eight of the packet, under Strategy Two, Strat- two. Don't get through that word. And the highlighting of fiscal system change to a fund-balanced accounting method, found on page fifty-nine, under Strategy One. P and Z specifically one of these changes noted. P and Z's review focuses on what has been accomplished over the last two years in regards to the comprehensive plan, and what still remains to be focused on. The city has done a lot to accomplish the goals of the citizens expressed in the comprehensive plan. The question I would like to put to council is, other than this review of what has been done and what still can be done for the citizens. Would it be a benefit for council to create a new additional survey of citizens to possibly use the results as an update for what the citizens would like from us to prioritize focusing on next? I can see the very real possibility that citizens may view other elements of this comprehensive plan as not as urgent now that the roads have been done and the playground and other park improvements have been implemented. Perhaps the survey could list the items not yet completed, and have them rated in terms of urgency for citizens. The other question I would like council to consider is, what would our next steps be with this review from P and Z? Does council wish to rework, reword the comprehensive plan to reflect what has already been done and what yet remains to be done? Should this reworking of the comp plan wording be handed off to someone else specifically? A citizen brought an idea to my attention that perhaps it would be nice to take the comprehensive plan and make it into a chess look checklist format, and tick off those things that have been accomplished. And those things that have left yet to be done, maybe have a description of where in the process those things stand currently. This simplified checklist might be a good resource for the city to have. Perhaps help us focus on the goals of what, that have begun to take shape and those that need to be started. On pages thirty-seven and thirty-eight of this review, it refers to the Parks Master Plan Update and considering placement of the dog park, both of which have been sent to the Parks Board a while ago. I would like to liaison to follow up on these topics with the Parks Board, and report back with where we are in the process of these two topics. Also on page fifty-seven of the packet, under Protect What Exists section. I would like to point out that the Tree Board, as part of their annual Arbor Day event, does a great community oak wilt education program by the representation. By having a presentation by Mr. Flackey during that event. And also, oak wilt education flyers have been sent out to citizens by mail. Under the section, I can see the possibility of adding fire protection, such as the informational packets the city plans on sending out on the topic. As part of a larger emergency fire protection plan, as protecting what exists. Um, I'll turn over the discussion to council to help guide what next steps we should take with the comprehensive plan review given to us by P and Z. Brimmer.
Well, if we remember, not that long ago, it was actually over a year ago, but uh, we were talking about a new survey. And that was delayed out of the concept of wanting to get this first. Uh, even though we knew that we've already done a lot of the things in here, so we actually need new direction. And then we also established that we had additional questions for citizens at that time, right? Uh, during that conversation, it was also floated paying for professional services again. If we remember, the contract services for the comp plan for the original firm we were with was like fifty thousand dollars. So, if you're going with a professional comprehensive plan update, all that stuff, that's a budget item that we need to consider. Um, if we're looking for something a little bit more like other things we've done, we view Survey Monkey for surveys. Also, our new website has a pretty interesting forms component that can serve us and has analytics, much like Survey Monkey. Um, and the cool thing about that is you can create some of those, uh, a little bit more of those guards for, uh, that people are concerned about cheating, because we know we did have cheating on one of our surveys significantly. Uh, so, you know, I, I think that conversation's relevant. It's also actually been like, what, four years since the survey was done, correct? Yeah, at least, yeah, so four years there. Uh, if you were talking about doing another one, that whole process would be at least a year out, so that's five years out from that survey, right? If we went with like a professional firm and did all of that stuff. Um, at the very minimum, we need to do an ordinance update, meaning we need to update the comp plan document. And pass an ordinance doing such as well. Although the way our ordinance is written, it might allow us to update the document without because it might say, I need a reordance again, but um, but I support updating the document, I support another citizen survey. Uh, I don't wanna spend fifty thousand dollars to do these things. Um, and it's not because I don't respect professionals or think that we need them, I just would either like to think of a budget saving or cost option, you know, to see if we can reduce that, because I just, that process is huge, so.
Well, I mean, I would be more than willing as the P and Z leaders to take the document that they gave us and compare it to the actual, and maybe come up with a draft of what this looks like with their input. You know, P and Z says, hey, this needs to be changed, maybe changed, and then create a new draft of some sort to bring, bring back to council. But, I think we have an opportunity right now, which is that survey part. Because if we literally go through, and they, they do a really good job of this, it's sort of like, this been done, this been done, this been done, this is a little worse, this is a little worse. But if we start asking the citizens the question of, these are the things that we haven't done yet. Do you consider them, like, where do you prioritize them that we should stress? Because it might have changed over these years, they might go, oh, we want trails is now on fire, you know, dog park, nah, not so much anymore, you know, like, it, it can shift. And I think that would be really good destruction, personally. But that could be a very small, like you said, survey that we kind of generate through a third party, but not a big old engineer in front to do it.
Well, the first big survey we did was Texas State Sociology Department did for us, and um, we do have, we still have an end in the sociology department, so that could be a possibility to assume. Group of students. Um, and that involves this, what possible, right, and then, but everything else was.
Okay, couple comments, um, I like the idea that council member eyes look forward that we could use you know, some of the things we have, especially we have facility in the website. We might then create a system of people will, will go there to know that they can be responded to. I had also cost savings, you know, we've, we've got some budgeting parameters we're trying to work within. I also think the survey, I believe from the top, people I talked to, there are issues that are not addressed. That we need to give, get some input from our citizens, and we might be surprised with things that are not in the comp plan that are of importance.
Exactly.
Yeah.
We've got, we've got lots of new people.
Well, and that's also what I find interesting about our surveys in the past, is there's always that open box at the end, which is really great. Like, I think a lot of the comp plan is built from a lot of those comments. You know, because it's like, oh, we get the same comment over and over and over again, okay.
And that's usually the ones.
Uh, it said in phase three, we're supposed to update the survey every four to six years. So, literally, the document tells us what to do here.
So, we.
So, we're due for a survey. Um, so if we follow that, and then I was gonna look at the code, but I think that's kind of a new point, because it sounds like we're toward going that, within that direction anyway, so we can address the code portion as we did, but.
All right, the, um, the motion on the floor is to accept the review of the comprehensive plan.
If we, yeah, so there'd be amendments if we wished to add, I think the survey part of this.
Can I ask that we bring this back up at another time for those discussions and maybe have you know what I mean, because I just wanna accept it right now. I think we could really get into the weeds on like, the, the myriad of directions we could consider, so maybe that could be developed as its own proposal for us, you know, with a little bit more research, correct?
We'll bring something back.
And do we need to firm up cost numbers? Does this need to be?
Well, that would be part of the budget. Yeah, when we, when we bring it back up.
We need to do that quickly.
Council, I mean, somebody um, I mean, working with P and Z or just working independently to sort of put some of these notes together, I mean, I, I can talk to, I mean, work for me, and we can find out, you know, what might be possible through the university. Um, and just be able to come back with a, a plan of this happens, and it's in the comprehensive plan that we're supposed to do it anyway. It's a response to that, not really, I mean, also a response to this. But, um, but yeah, I like, I like being able to come back to the council with more of a plan rather than just throw a bunch of we all have good ideas, so it would be nice to have a better plan made up of these good ideas.
So.
We're writing notes.
So, in regards to okay, I'll bring back the idea of the survey next, and then, then we can go through that whole process of, or you send the mayor possible question.
Yeah, but, but just for now, I mean, when the, when, after, after this, and start piling on it, yeah, just let's sit down like early next week or something and just just have a conversation.
Yeah.
This is the master.
The comp plan?
Yeah.
Wow.
You wanna put it in your computer? You wanna give me this back? True. The city has one too, but.
She never really wants that.
I know, I'm very.
Can we, um, can we then vote on the motion, please, to accept the review of the, uh, by the comprehensive plan? By planning and zoning? Show hands. All right, moving on, item number fourteen is the discussion and possible action on the final design and plan for improvement at the triangle.
I move that we approve the final design and plan for improvement at the triangle.
I agree.
So, originally, this proposal was dedicated to thousands, you guys approved of it, and you see the basic plans in there, and told you to come back after having talked to our lovely master gardener, master naturalist neighbors. Essentially, they were like, this is a great idea, and here's some plant recommendations, we don't really have any alterations to recommend on the design. Um, in the packet, you'll see kind of the basics, I don't, we don't, we didn't have Adobe to use for designing layout, but um, you know, so that's, if you have questions, what that means. Uh, you can see some basic outlines of what these materials are gonna cost. The total expected cost is actually close to like a three grand. I will be seeking donations of these items, but I am asking that we consider increasing the budget to three thousand, utilizing one thousand from the Bozak grant.
I second that amendment.
Part of the reason why we needed an increase, it wasn't that I was off on the budgeting before, it's because we didn't get a grant we were hoping to get to help offset some of these costs. It was kind of a long shot, but that's also why it took so long, I had to wait till after December to know for sure I wasn't getting that. Uh, not me, this lady, but I wrote the application. But, um, with that in mind, we also have volunteers, so the timing of this, it was like well, we won't have anywhere to do the work until now, we potentially do because we have C Y J volunteers that are willing to help with the landscaping aspects. Do you have any questions, do you remember the need for the project or what the plan was?
So, as far as doing it this year, C Y J volunteers will be available in only until, something like the middle of or late July, really August, so, you know, the timing is there at events.
Yeah, we need to do all the land work, if you notice in here, we're not gonna try to plant. Where, the planting will be dependent on rainwater collection, or potentially seasonally what was going on with the rain. Um, what the master gardeners picked, though, it was Becky Dunn, uh, and Claire Palmer gave me a review. Um, what Claire outlined in her drawing was all native gra- like stuff that's gonna be very drought tolerant. And actually, part, part of the goal of this entire project is to be an educational component for rainwater collection and show sort of like a whole system project of what you could do with a smaller roof, you know, so.
That roof will generate hundreds of gallons of water.
I also like the rock set-up setback from the foundation for runoff. And it's, it's just a very smart component that not everybody knows, because I, I look at my own foundation and go, yeah.
Yeah, it's not just the runoff.
One little, just caveat on this, is that, you know, the triangle was, was damaged pretty significantly in the Elsor. Um, and so we're waiting on, on insurance to work its way out and, and get that going on, have the, have the roof repaired, but.
Yeah, you guys have one more eyelashes.
When the, uh, but that would all. When the, uh, but that would also be a good time to, you know, sort of maybe gather us.
Yeah, so the rocks are good for drainage, the, the sheet flow runoff off the roof to help. Avoid that like erosion. They also serve other purposes, uh, so anytime you plant, most people don't realize this. You're not supposed to plant plants near structures, it's a fire hazard. So you're supposed to step back plants and then depending on, so some of the plants they recommended will actually be planted even further out because of the way they grow. You don't want grasses, shrubs, bushes, whatever you want to call them, touching your structure. Because if they catch fire, they catch a building on fire. Now, it's just the gazebo, but it was a pretty big investment, so. Um, the other part they play is if you're trying to do maintenance around the gazebo and you need to access it from the other side. You don't want bushes right up against that, so.
That makes good sense. All right, so the, um, the motion then is to, is to approve the final design and plan for improvements of the triangle. Um, with a budget of three thousand dollars with a thousand of that coming from the Bozak grant. So, any further discussion? There will be one on the motion. On favor, please say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item number fifteen. Um, is to adopt an ordinance establishing the public information policy for the city of Wood Creek. Um, as amended by council on day.
Hey, Mayor Mear. I move we adopt amending ordinance twenty four dash three, 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 establishing the public information policy for the city of Wood Creek, Texas.
Okay.
Oh, what was that?
It was.
I thought.
Yeah, she the person and mine was like.
Okay.
The mayor for ten seconded it, but it sounded to me like.
It sounded like a noise.
It was like, so, because I started and then I heard her say it, so.
Well, then maybe technically you are the first to speak. If you stopped because she.
Well, no, she, she started first. You can have it.
Forget it. All right, um. Any of you got them on the ordinance?
I mean, the, I see the edits that are supposed to be there, so this is the right document, right?
Yeah, twenty four dot three, three, three is the clean document.
Okay.
Correct, that start on seventy two.
They both have that number.
Kind of eight seventy.
So that's the one you're talking about?
One is red line, one isn't.
Okay, so that's the only difference, right?
And it's only under the definitions that there's an additional change.
Right, the definition just sort of defined. The biography by this.
Yeah, we asked.
So that's really fundamentally the only change in the, in the ordinance.
Yeah.
All right, so I have a motion by county from the chairman, seconded by mayor for ten times. Um, to adopt the ordinance to establish the public information policy for the city of Wood Creek. On favor, please signify by raising your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item number sixteen.
I move that we remove the current city arborist request for proposals, edit and repost for twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget year. And add a direct solicitation action with a minimum of five local vendors for city staff. A second. So this idea is a little wonky now, because it was actually intended to go with the oak wilt one. Because it was, the effort was to avoid a budget amendment. So, um, right now we have two contracts out, but only enough money allocated in the budget for one of them. So this will remove that need for a minute. In the meantime, um, we could, I, I, I gave you a proposed edit. We could in theory go ahead and, and approve that proposed edit today if y'all wanted. Um, I feel like it's ready to go, but I, I do think that we should. You know, we, we changed the amount of money and things like that, so I would like maybe a second review and not asking to do that to the, that, that we move forward with this edit today. Does that make sense? The motion as it stands is good. And I, I don't want to move forward with this edit, but if y'all are ready to. I'm opening that discussion, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Could you restate the, the edit that you're?
So the specific edit that I adjusted, let me try to find it real fast, because my.
Sure.
Um, page seventeen?
Yeah.
So the, there were two specific items, I remember. This is not, no, 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 no. So the one I edited is page eighty one.
Oh.
Um, I changed, I said they may not solicit work from private property owners while in direct service to the city of Wood Creek on a permit request consultation. Um, that was something I felt uncomfortable with on the first round. We talked about, oh, well, no, maybe it could be fine, but really it is kind of a conflict of interest and they really shouldn't be trying to. Get work while consulting for the city. Now, if somebody liked them and pursued them outside, that's different, but we don't want them walking around soliciting work while. On the city budget.
Yeah, I think that the only reason that came up was that it would be an incentive to get somebody to take the job rate from them up.
Right, um, the other thing I changed was, um, some of the wording around some of the qualifications, I believe, was a little weird. And then I, there was another one, um. Sorry, I should have been more prepared on the front. It's in my notes from the last meeting. I didn't think to transfer it over today. I'm so sorry. I also, it's pretty heavily altered in regards to its format. It more matches the format that we recently started using for a bunch of other items. It was, um, actually started with an edit from either Suzanne or Kevin. I don't know originally the, this version, but I just replicated it. Um, what was it? Oh, I changed, because with the oak wilt identification and management, it's a qualification and they have to have appropriate permits to apply treatment. So just having an oak wilt specialist doesn't mean that they can actually apply. Treatment is a controlled substance. You have to have a different license. Um, that was one of the things.
I think it would be gracious to use this edited document.
Yes.
The second one, I just moved forward with it.
I think that's what you do for president.
Both of you.
I said.
It's not specifically in her motion, so she has to add that we're making amendment to. Have this be. All right.
Yeah, so the other thing it changes is kind of like them proposing to us their, their hourly rates and things like that versus us saying we've got eight thousand dollars and that, you know what I mean? It's.
That's one.
Um. I mean, I feel ready and you, and I just kind of felt a little insecure about it, because like I said, I, this was, I was ready for this at a different meeting. It got put on this meeting. Um, I kind of was like, oh, you know, let's at least pull it and then if y'all had any further edits, I'd add it, you know? I didn't expect it to pass, I guess is why.
Editor, arborists, whoever calls. Unlike my next for neighbor here.
Deborah, would you be willing, I'm sorry, be so casual. Mayor for ten times, would you be willing to add an amendment so that we can pass this document?
Yes, okay, so this was the other key. I finally found the one thing I wanted to highlight, because I was kind of scared of not at least giving you the specifics. This was, we had a minimum service hours for ten hours per week. They had to be available. And so I took out that language, because when I talked to some of the, the professionals in the industry, not Jacob. But we have friends in this industry and they were like, yeah, first off, they never even saw this. They never heard of it. It was like, it didn't reach their circles somehow. The second thing is when I was talking about some of these qualifiers, they were like, that puts me in a really uncomfortable position. Because if I'm on a big job on week, I'm not going to stop what I'm doing to come over to the city of Wood Creek to help y'all. And if I did, it might be after hours. And so they just were like, this, the way you have this set up doesn't really like work for us.
That's correct.
So that was interesting feedback that we didn't really get from Jacob, because he lives here. So for him to come, you know what I mean? He was thinking from that perspective of, oh, yeah, if you had to come. You know, be available ten hours a week and you're local, that's not a big deal, but it looks very much like we might not even pull a local. You know what I mean? Because there's only like three certified arborists in Wimberly Valley. Anyway, T M I, I will. Offer an amendment to post. The current edit. Starting on page eighty one. Now.
Second.
All right, so the amendment is to post the current edit. Beginning of page eight. Any further discussion?
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Amendment passes. Um, the main motion is to remove the current city arborist request. Um, and then to post this edited version in place. The R F Q.
And add direct solicitation.
All in favor, the main motion is amended. Please signify by raising your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. All right, that's good, but I wouldn't get some response this time.
I think the direct solicitation would be good, because I, the, the tree guy don't look for this stuff. Unless they're trying to get the municipal arborist certification and not such a weird niche that it just wasn't hitting radars.
Yeah, yeah, so. All right, number seventeen. Is discuss and take the possible action to update policies and procedures as it relates to the two-way communications between council, the five-year boards and the council.
So.
Council member chairman.
I took a bite of my sandwich at the wrong time. Um, I move that we take action to update the policies and procedures as it relates to the two-way communications between council advisory boards and council.
Say it again.
So. I move to suspend the rules as it relates to this discussion on this item, because we may need a non-free lower. Um, I placed this item in front of council as a way to look at ways we can improve the communication between our advisory boards and council. I made the motion in such a way as to allow us to look at the whole process, the liaison process that we have in place. And other elements such as the communication form staff has created for this process. I'm sorry, I'm eating my sandwich. On page eighty five of the packet. You will find an example of the communication form being used by staff when it comes to communications from advisory boards to council. Um, one element I could see needed updating is the first checkbox that which shows report slash recommendation. These are two elements that should be broken into two separate checkboxes, as a report is a non-actionable item on council's agenda. While a recommendation is an actionable item and should be placed on the regular agenda section. A report is an update of what the advisory board is doing, while a recommendation is a, from an advisory board is an action taken by them. Asking council to consider taking an action on something.
Would that be the same as the second checkbox, which is request for item to be considered by council?
Right, they're just that they have the, that one box of report slash recommendation.
I know, but I mean, if there's report to council or recommendation to council, two boxes, do you need request for item to be considered by council?
Yeah, not really. That's what I'm just saying, just wanted to separate out those two words. It's more the concept of. Um, the element, other element of this communication format, like council to consider is that perhaps this form could be used. From, as a communication from council to advisory boards as well, as the current practice of it only coming from advisory boards.
One exists, sorry.
I've never seen it.
And then who would have been filling that out?
Not me, no, I'm kidding.
No, I mean.
If it was presented to council, it would be the mayor that fills it out. I can. I can go there. It exists, I can email it to you.
No, the mayor, we've done that, I mean, so, so.
If council made a motion to send something to an advisory board.
I guess the mayor could sign up on it.
Yeah, the mayor just signs off on y'all's motion.
Can I request that we hold a workshop instead of trying to do this in the middle of a council meeting?
Absolutely, because that's why I asked for, I, I was actually going to postpone this item, because it was a long bag. And there's a lot of perks to this. So I move to amend that we postpone this to a workshop at a future date.
A second?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I agree. Um. Just a future date, or do you have a date in mind?
Even the second meeting of this month would be fine, um. They don't necessarily have to be delayed, but, um. Part of the reason I would like to take it up in workshop is, we just found out we're maybe missing a form, right? Um, and then there are a ton of questions in here.
Yes.
And.
I really kind of wanted to go through them all. That's why I was like, I don't think I should do this right now.
Yeah.
But I wanted, I wanted to at least present everything.
Can we ask, can we ask council to, you know, I know you've probably already looked at these, but to review these questions. Again, sort of get your own thoughts together, so that when we have a workshop, we can be pretty efficient in it.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, so the motion on the floor is to postpone for a future date. On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Good call. All right, number eighteen, um, is mine. Um, discuss and take appropriate action to engage in a professional services agreement with a municipal administration consultant to provide the city with guidance on the appropriate roles. And duties of the city administrator for the city of Wood Creek to provide direct guidance to staff and mayor to serve as part-time municipal administration advisor.
Yes. Second.
That is my motion.
Yeah.
Um, in the packet, beginning. On page ninety three, um, we have, I solicited proposals based on recommendations from a, a number of people. Um, that, uh, that are consultants in municipal government with. At least some level specialty in, um, in city administration, municipal administration, city management. Um, the ones that came in, I think of the, of the proposal that came in. Um, Mr. Baze, the, the first. It's good, the, the others are more like engagement letters, like, um. I mean, it may or may not even specify the fee, but the second one, Mr. McDougall. Um, his fee was one fifty five, Mr. Baze, um, was, what, I think it was sixty, um, per hour. Um, the, um, Texas First Group just sent us their agreement. Um, I did the math on it, because when I talked to, um, when I, when I spoke on the phone, uh, with Mr. Dixon. He said that the formula was they take the annual salary of the city administrator and divide it by two hundred and eighty, I think it was. And when I plugged in even a mid-level salary, it came out to be like two hundred and eighty-five dollars an hour.
Yeah.
Um, so, so, um, I didn't follow, and then Vicki Rudy, um, is represented by City Hall Essentials. And I spoke with her, um, their billing rate is, um, one twenty-five an hour. Um, and Ms. Rudy is, I think Ms., I think she said she was in, in Cedar Park. So she's, you know, pretty close by. Um, City Hall Essentials has a, has a good reputation for this kind of providing, uh, temporary, uh, professional services from. From city manager all the way down. Um, so they've got a, they've got a good reputation. Um, the, uh, uh, McDougall has like twenty-five years, um, as a city manager. The last, um, last job I think it was for Arthur. Um, he came in a little bit higher at one fifty-five. Um, Mike, Michael Baze, um, came, I asked them all the same basic. Or I, I split the same scenario in the same basic way, which is that, uh, we want somebody that we're not looking for an interim city manager. So much as a, a guide. Um, we've got a good staff that can, that can help out. We are talking about some, some possible changes in the whole structure going back to what, you know, our, our city administrator used to be. Um, and so what we said was like, like, you know. You can apply for the position of city manager or, or municipal administrator. Um, the R F Q has been approved and posted, is, is it posted?
Yeah, I'll let you see it with you.
Okay, so it needs to be posted, but anyway, so the, so the R F Q is posted, anybody can apply. Um, and so, so part of, part of that guidance would be to help look at those proposals. Um, and make recommendations. Um, but a lot of it is just like, we've got a lot of work to do in the next few months. And so having somebody that has the experience, um, would be very. And so having somebody that has the experience would be very helpful to us and, and I think a good investment. My, my, my initial preference is really for, for Mr. Bates. Mike Baze was city manager or city administrator for, for Wimberly. And was very well-liked by, by their council and, and other staff. He went from being a city administrator to starting his consulting service. Which is one of the reasons why his rate is a little, is lower, like, like half what the rest of them are, which is frankly appealing to me. And, and he also said, this, I'll, I'll be there. I, I, you know, I don't think we need to take it more than eighty a month. I mean, it says not to exceed eighty hours per month. And, and he you know, that, that's, you know, it's like, I'm, I'm coming to council for recommendations and, and approval to move forward.
So are we picking right now?
I just wanted to point out, he lives in Plano, so even though his rate is cheaper, there's a housing fee and travel miles.
Well, he would, yeah, so, so what we said was, I mean, there's going to be travel miles with any of them, but but what, what I said to all of them is that, you know, time, time in Wood Creek would be limited, but we don't, we don't really need somebody just sitting at a desk.
No.
You know, doing work. So, so on those weeks that we are going to have a in-person, and, and at first, I mean, we would want him, or anybody, her and her. You know, in, at City Hall, you know, sort of getting a feel for the place and maybe spend a few days. And then go home, and then after that, it's mostly remote with maybe some check-ins. So, so if they're coming from, from, well, Cedar Park's not a problem. But it is, it is part of the, you know, part of the structure. So we would, we'd have to find some, you know, hotel or else a while and, but he also sort of said, you know, I like coming down there, so. And see, I mean, this is, this really was him. I don't think he really wanted to leave. And, and this was sort of forced into it, so anyway. So I don't know that we, I mean, we can make a decision to make a, to make a, an offer. What I, what I wanted to do though before, I mean, if we, if we can say, okay, well, you know, these are our, you know, top three, or our top two. And then the next step would be to, to, to have a more one-on-one conversation just over the phone or Zoom. And, and include staff members. Because it's really important that they click with this person as well. So that's my proposal.
But you are asking us to select one of them?
No, one.
Okay, two.
Yeah, if there's a clear preference, I mean, I remember, you know, when we were going through the city engineer proposals, we just said, you know, they're just so, it's just such a vast difference between these guys and the next guys, it's not even worth, you know, having the rest of the conversation. So I've, I've been very much clutched at this and y'all have, and so I have some fairly strong opinions. And I have talked to the folks, and there are a couple that I think are, you know, top-notch, and either one of them would be, would be great. Probably three, I mean, there's a, a strong one and two.
Question, City Hall Essentials, is that connected to T M L somehow?
No, it's Allen Borke was from.
It's Borke. Oh.
I mean, they've been running for us before. But it is, it is City Hall Essentials is, Sheila Porquez manages City Hall Essentials.
So actually, I mean, you probably wouldn't give us your opinion, would you, City Attorney?
He made one of the recommendations.
But yeah, if you'd be willing to give the mayor your opinion after council.
He did, he just.
Oh, he didn't say that, I'm sorry.
I, I asked Charlie if, you know, if he knew of anybody that we should contact. And so the call back on.
I know, I know all of these people. Thank you. I work directly with, I've worked directly with McDougal and directly with Mike Baze. Whether that's right.
Those are my top two picks personally, so.
Okay, is it Baze?
Is it Baze?
Is it Baze? I don't know.
No, he don't even.
Vicky Rudy.
In part because of the lower price base.
She's still one twenty-five.
So remember for professional services, Harry's point isn't necessarily our goal. We're looking at experience and qualifications, not to say Vicky Rudy doesn't have it. I aggregated this, she actually sent in a resume, but I don't mind going on camera saying that I do not love a lot of the work and advice that has come out of the Porches. Umbrella, and have been through several trainings that are directly under them, and I just, I have had direct conflict with the information given as it actually applies in practice, and so no, no, no slight to her. But I would prefer to go in a different direction than the work I see come out of that umbrella sometimes.
And it's because of which group, Boarda?
City Hall Essentials. I, I did also think they were maybe associated with T M L. I didn't Google it. For some reason, it sounds like it, but yeah, maybe it's just because we've heard it so much, but.
Oh, they presented for a lot of T M L.
That's maybe it, yeah. I don't love that this person, the other guy that just sent in a service agreement, for some reason, that is kind of a little.
I wouldn't choose that person, you know, it's.
It was, it was, and I, I have to say, it was the, it was, it was, it was, um, it wasn't the best phone conversation compared to the other three.
I mean, it's just like, I, I think they're kind of winding down.
Yeah.
Is that, yeah, I think so. We're talking about Texas First. Yeah, I think they're, I think they're kind of winding down. I'm getting that impression now with us a couple times.
I love that Mike Baze has history in the balance so quickly. And I, I love the glowing recommendation from council members over there on him. That's kind of nice to have that known.
Yeah. He was also, when we first started having our Wood Creek Wimberly meetings. Mike was the city manager in Wimberly at the time, so it was, it was Gina Porquez. Mike Baze and Rebecca Minnick were the three sent that, that represented Wood Creek to our, it was Brent and, and me and Kevin. Brent's at first, I think Kevin, so, and, and Mike just got on the list. And he's just, he, he's got, he's got a law enforcement background. Which hurt us when we talked about collaborating on the, on the Valley Marshal. Because he wanted to do it up really right, and it was going to cost us like a hundred grand a year. You know, because somebody in Conwell would drive around and write tickets, but, but his experience was amazing as far as, you know, playing all that, he did a good job. I, I don't think you would get, in fact, in fact, I'm pretty sure that when word got out that, that Mr. Rule had quit. That somebody at Wimberly found out, got a call, Mike said he didn't call him also. Because I got a call, I got a call from Mike first. But then he talked to you about something, okay, so.
So I move that you select Mike Baze and McDougal first up to consider and have a one-on-one.
My second.
Since I don't know anything about City Hall Essentials, I will follow your lead though.
All right, thank you. So I've moved and seconded to move forward with interviews of Michael Baze and McDougal perceived with those interviews with staff. Just a clarification at the inclusion of that. And we can, we can bring it back to council. Say, hey, we want to go with so-and-so, or we can just say we won't with so-and-so. Just go forward.
How's the?
For public ser, I mean, for, for professional services, he doesn't have to come to council for approval. You know, it's like up to, like, almost unlimited fund, but it's.
For.
Higher professional services.
Right, well, I mean, city council has to approve any contract, but, you know, assuming it's within the budget or not for your city administration.
So we would bring the, we would just bring the contract back to final approval?
And how do we budget that?
Well, it's on my hands, so when we get to, I am funny.
Yeah, so I had sort of said in, in my conversation with these folks that, you know, I didn't want it to exceed twenty K. That the, the entire contract, you know, kind of about twenty K. That's a pretty fair amount, and I think that with, with any of them, at least any of the, you know, hundred and a quarter, sixty to hundred and a quarter range, hundred fifty-five range. People, we could get, you know, pretty good service, you know, in that range, but.
We can also build it into the contract.
Oh, yeah.
I would hope so.
So as part of clarification, I'm going back to re-engage in a professional services agreement with a municipal administration consultant to provide the service, the city with guidance on the appropriate roles and duties. So this is providing guidance, but not, not actually doing the job of.
Well, there was, I mean, that's part of the guidance is like, okay, so, so this is how you do a budget amendment. Okay, so we're going to go ahead and do this budget amendment. Are you picking up on that? And so, and so I want our, I want our staff here, there, that remain in place to be able to fulfill these roles. I mean, I need to be able to fulfill the roles, and I don't know how to do it either, so.
The other key factor to remember is that for the last couple of years while we've had Kevin, even though Mr. Rule had experience working in cities, we've never been a city administrator, or administrator, right? So there were even huge areas of the job that he didn't know and was learning on-site. So it would be really nice for existing staff to maybe get a real, an experienced professional to consult with a little bit more, who isn't necessarily the attorney looking at it from that perspective, right? Or isn't the mayor looking at the history of like, oh, we've done it in the past, but just a real level-headed like, hey, these are your options. You know, and you guys pick one, because y'all, you know, we pick, but it would be nice to get somebody in here with a little bit more like, you know, know-how.
Part of this, you know, I mean, part of my thinking in this really went back to hiring Mr. Rule. Because, you know, hindsight being twenty-twenty. Providing this for Kevin, when we hired him, to have somebody that could mentor him. And, and turn him from finance director to city manager, or municipal administrator, would have been, I mean, he'd quite so be.
And also almost the way we consult the attorney of professional that has the answers in this field.
The other thing too is that, is that, kind of like remember that Stephen Bossberger came in and helped us with our retreat. I mean, part of his deal was, you know, you, you signed me up for life, you know, I mean, you often call me whatever. Maybe that's the new bill, no, they won't, but you know, if you need help, you know, I'm there. I was sort of expected from, to build up that kind of relationship with, with this person that, you know, we still be able to call and get support and bring them back. Prepare to vote. All in favor, please signify by raising your hand if you're on.
Was there, were we voting on amendment, or was that called at the wrong time?
No, it wasn't an amendment, it's just, the, the, the motion was to move forward with the interviews, and my clarification was what do you want to see actually the interviews? And, and answers seem to be just, you know, bring contract back.
All right, we narrowed it down to two.
Yeah. All right, great, thank you. Number nineteen is discuss the possible action to assign council members to individual appointees. The Dave Karen Duckin and James Miller of the Planning and Zoning Commission, thereby tying these appointments to election cycles for ordinance. Mayor Portman.
I'm going to make two motions, okay? So just note. I move that Karen Duckin's term on the Planning and Zoning Commission be assigned to Krista Richardson for the purposes of aligning appointments on the P N Z with that of an election cycle per ordinance. So to explain, this is cleaning up business, it's in there. Basically, we already appointed them, but when we did it, we just, everybody appointed both of them. But our ordinance requires everyone to be assigned to election cycles. And so Krista and I were the only council members on the last election cycle, so these people's appointments need to be tied to us, if that makes sense. So to keep it flowing appropriately.
Question, I believe Mr. Miller was, sorry, he started when I started a year and a half ago. That's, and I appointed him technically. Okay, ordinance, review this, or the P N Z, okay, sorry.
Understandable confusion, same guy.
Yeah, should be same people.
Should we vote someone else?
Well, another question. So this isn't changing any configuration, it's just assigning these council members.
Yeah, right now, all, all members of the P N Z are mine.
Was she mine?
No, P N Z, I mean, P N Z was all, all Rasco appointments. I mean, when you, when you go down the list, it's got my name by every single one of them. So we're trying to make that move away from the mayor appoints all of P N Z to council members. So each one of you will ultimately win, win a P N Z member.
After you.
The mo, the motion on the floor is to essentially assign Karen Duckin to council member Richardson in her term service. All in favor, please raise your hands. Thank you. And motion number two.
I move that Jim Miller's term on the Planning and Zoning Commission be assigned to Deborah Heinz for the purposes of aligning appointments on the P N Z without an election cycle per ordinance.
My second.
All right, same background? Any discussion? Okay to vote? Please raise your hands. All right, final item on the regular agenda, item number twenty. Discuss and possible action to accept a proposed budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. And direct C S F to post on the city website before the July twentieth, twenty twenty-four deadline for such posting, and I would like to well, this is the motion on the floor first.
I move that we approve the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. And direct staff to post on the city website before the July twentieth, twenty twenty-four deadline for such postings.
And we're, I just wanted, before we go, I mean, I just wanted to say one quick thing. Which is to thank all of y'all for the incredible workshop today, and I mean, we, we did knock it out, and especially thank Linnea Bailey, or, you know, Council Member Bailey has put in, I don't know how many, 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 many hours going through the books, talking to the Bonview people. Deborah has worked really hard with her to get all this together, get it in a format that we can go down the screen and plug in numbers and take it. City Secretary McKenzie, you know, helped us, you know, get the, the covered information together in advance so that it's, so that nothing's pending. I mean, we can just do this and get it done and be a good judge.
Unfortunately, we have to make some adjustments now. So a person being a city manager item, we need to add into the expenses specifically that contract for, actually. Do you anticipate that contract for managerial assistance to be enough this little year? So it would just be a.
The year, I hope we're, I hope we're long on them or by October.
All right, the comp plan, we won't, we don't have. All right, uh, the comp plan, we won't, we don't have a budget for that, uh, now. To update the survey. And, um.
We, do we have a? You think it's gonna be the full big number though?
No, but we need to allocate something in the budget if we're planning to do a survey, and it doesn't make any sense to not, you know? So. Like if you ever had a budget in the last time.
We still, we're still gonna have to send out a mailer.
Yeah, there's still gonna be some expense, but, but instead of fifty grand, it would be five.
All right, so when we worked with Kate Freeze, so when, when we worked with Kate Freeze out of the Comp Plan Work Group. And we held the town hall and Kate Freeze supported us and backed us, I think we ended up spending twenty grand, so. You know, I feel like twenty grand would be a reasonable amount to kind of cover. Mailers, paper printout surveys, if we go that route. Any sort of professional statistical analysis or whatever that people are wanting, you know, because that's all built hourly. And we.
If we can get it, if we can get it through the university, then we just.
It might be free then, but the other thing is, is Freeland Turk is different than Kate Freeze on this one point. They don't have people on their staff that do this kind of work for us, Kate Freeze did, so we won't be able to use Freeland Turk.
City planner yourself, we do.
So that bubble, but I, I would say twenty grand is a. A good, um. Thing.
No, yeah, yeah, wait, what? You're talking, what are we talking about?
Um, when we, when we did our, our comprehensive plan survey before, four years ago.
Oh, right.
Um, we were working with, with Kate Freeze, they had a city planner on staff that we worked with. That developed the survey and a lot of the work.
Oh, okay, all right.
So I'm gonna, I have under professional services scratched out our code administrator line item. And that's where I'm gonna plug in Comp Plan for twenty grand.
Okay, um, well, we were discussing that. I was pleased that we were using some of our resources on the website. And I thought about, you know, Survey Monkey and how we can create this, this site. That would be. And I just think. Twenty grand, that's a lot of money, um.
For a comprehensive plan?
For a Comp Plan update.
Oh, yeah.
It's cheap, right?
It's pretty inexpensive.
Yeah, I don't think it's enough, really, but, um. See, the thing about it, Linnea, sorry, I'm normally speaking, um, I get roasted for everything I do, right? Just broadly roasted on the internet, so when I did our surveys for Survey Monkey. I took the brunt of that heat and was criticized ad nauseam, and then whenever I analyzed the data. Even though I am a trained professional in this field that holds a degree. Uh, I was roasted for that and people questioned the data. So the discussion last summer, actually you at the forefront, was we need a professional, we can't trust council members to do this. So forgive me, and I am hesitant to devote my personal time. To result in being ridiculed, questioned, undermined, even though it is my professional field. I'm literally licensed or, you know, whatever, to do this kind of stuff. With that in mind, the other thing is I had to spend countless hours validating the data on Survey Monkey and tracking IP addresses. Yeah, and that took hours and hours and hours to eliminate all the fraudulent entries because we asked about chickens and S T Rs. And so people literally hired databases to flood that survey system and prove us wrong. About being able to take these kind of surveys, so at this point, I'm a little hesitant to personally take on. That stuff, now, do I believe that we can still utilize the resources we're already paying for? Yes, but do I think at this point there needs to be a third party involved? Absolutely.
Okay, that's a good explanation, I'm looking at we were budget balanced twenty eight thousand. Low.
Yep.
Now we just added forty thousand, so we are.
Twenty.
No, we added twenty for the, um.
That's not an extra budget.
Well, that's, that's just this year's budget. So we're not going to have that person in next year's budget, no, this is just to phase through.
Okay, I, I do have a list of things I'd like to render real fast that we, that were in my notes, but I couldn't pull them up on the screen because of what we were doing. Yeah, but these are all based on conversations we've had as council, and I'll move through them pretty quick, um. We did not add the contingency emergency fund that Mayor Rasco mentioned. These are funds we planned would not spend, but need to sit there in the event that we have an emergency. So we need to add that on here. Typically, the contingency fund is fifty and emergency fund could be something else, I think fifty grand is.
There's nothing in the, I was looking for the budget, there's nothing that says contingency fifty thousand.
It used to.
Kevin removed it.
It's not in there.
Kevin removed it.
He.
I know, but that's what we've been comparing to, is the budget.
We did.
Yes, we used to have it, Kevin said we didn't need it anymore. And that was since they put, one of the big pushes left there, it used to be there. And in our previous fund balance policy, it was required.
So what, what Kevin said, I mean, just to refresh everybody's memory, and, and Chris, I don't think you were there, but. Um, you know, what Kevin was saying was that. Your reserve fund is your emergency fund, you know, so you don't really have to have contingency, you don't really have to have an emergency fund. You know, because you've got your reserves, you know, and if something happens, you just have to go to your reserve, so you want to keep a healthy reserve. You know, but, but you don't need to put it in your working budget, you know, so that's, that was the reason.
You were gonna say something, did they adjure me?
Nope.
Okay, it was not.
Oh, this, this sounds like basically we just renamed contingency or emergency and called it reserve. And that, and that renaming the truth.
So there are two different kind of competing. Uh, understandings of how budgets work, that have been on, on operation and activity now. Typically, a contingency fund is a budget line allocated and it stays there and it can be, um, drawn from, from. Without pulling from reserves, does that make sense? Yes. That can cover emergencies, it also covers, oh gosh, we actually need more equipment than we planned, we're gonna use it for. The reserves are, I think it's three to whatever months operating expenses that you have. That are not committed to an investment portfolio or whatever, that you have set aside for ready accessibility. In the event that there are catastrophic problems, right? All of our taxpayers buy that event and all the, you know, nobody can pay property taxes for a year, and the city's like, uh-oh. That's what that reserve you're supposed to have and you don't touch, right? So I found myself typically not super in agreement with Kevin's viewpoint on some of this stuff. Um, we mentioned bringing back the emergency contingency fund or whatever you want to call it. And so I'm only bringing it back now because it did not come in, fit in our discussion, but it was something mentioned as a preference. So we could mix it or say yes, but it's a thing we need to decide.
So I'm, I would like to have it purely because I'm bringing back the, the fund balance policy. And it's, and it talks about those kind of restrictions on the reserves.
Uh, we did not increase our large loan pickup, we already addressed that, we did talk about wanting to be able to buy more radar signs and more signs. So we feel like that that budget line item incorporated that anticipation of potential addition from that area. I know we talked about what we knew we needed in planning, but we only, we have a thousand dollars there. Do we want to skip more radar signs and just stick with the plan we have coming this year?
Do we still have them in the shed there?
Yep.
So why don't we see what we do with those?
Okay, um, the next one, um, we accounted for the new radio upgrade, that's great. We have not accounted for major code overhaul costs, even though we have systematically talked about it for four years now. And we have already filled our attorney's plate. Signit- with significant expenditures, right? And we anticipate a lot more in the subdivision land use area. Specifically, if not other areas, like we know that potentially our chapter thirty city secretary code is that.
Well, yeah, so I'm bringing those to council soon.
Right, but what I'm saying is, we don't have anything budgeted, and we've been talking about for four years now, needing a requalification slash. Sort of code, because we have so many loose ends, right? So, so the codes that reference nothing, nowhere, and this isn't something we did, right? I'm not, this is stuff that's been pervasive in the City Wood Creek code for eight, ten, fifteen years now. It's been unaddressed since back in, was it two thousand nine or whatever, I think, yeah, yeah, this. Big package was brought forward and it was a kind of a boilerplate template city code. And so a lot of it doesn't fit Wood Creek, it talks about things we don't have, never have, I mean, it is, there's. Problems, yeah, so we don't, we didn't budget for that at all, we didn't even talk about that, we can. See how it goes.
That we don't have anything to budget for. We're gonna have to have a bunch of stuff to come up with, hundred grand that we thought about.
Yeah, well, here's the thing is, we also have to remember that the city's budget, the basic M and O, yes, it should align with what your income is. But we also, we, we are allowed to spend other money. And we do have still a very, very healthy reserve, over half a million dollars. Just sitting in account, right? I'm just saying, we're not broke, and if we're spending money wisely on things that benefit the citizens, I'm not scared. And I'm not saying we have to go over budget, but I also, this is only the proposed draft, and it's really important that we have all the topics we at least wanted addressed. And if you guys want to skip something, I'm okay with that, but I'm working off a list of gnomes that people have expressed.
So I, I would put it in, because remember, this is the proposed budget. And then we're gonna go, we're gonna get this back again, and then at that time, we have another chunk in. Oh, no, no, we decided we're not gonna do that, I'm not gonna do that, and then, because we could also hear from the citizens, it's like, oh, that's it. Yeah, we're gonna hear, we're gonna hear.
We'll hear from them.
Yeah, and they may literally say the thing that we now adding might be the, I'm glad you finally did that, or you can, or no, I don't like it. Then we make that decision, and then we get to be about to do that, and we have another swing at it.
Do y'all want to boost general legal, do you want to skip and put this as like a, I don't know, I know? Do we want to make it online item? We specified it's only, okay. Code update. Uh, do you want to, do we want to just kind of give an estimate number? I mean, if we're spending forty thousand annually for just basic work, this is in support. And maybe its own specific, I mean, I guess, should I ask you specifically?
What?
What does requalification typically cost, or like, what is like a larger code? You have.
I think y'all are already classified, right?
Yeah.
In mini code, right, yeah, so. It's difficult to answer, um. Because it's the code, it's the original qualification that usually costs quite a bit of money. But, you know, taking out specific provisions and saying we need to work on this, it, it, you know, it may not be a lot. I, well, let me rephrase, I don't know that there's a lot as above, but you know, it might only be fifty, seventy five thousand dollars, you know? So it just depends on how much it is, what it is, you know, one of them may be real easy, right? Uh, the subdivisions, no, that won't be real easy, that's, because that's not legal fees, that's. I mean, it's partially legal fees, but it's legal fees, it's engineering fees, it's people and understanding, um, you know? I could ask, I mean, just to give you an idea, we just redid a subdivision regulation for our client, our planners did it in coordination with us. And I can find out how much that cost, just to give an idea for that.
You think fifty grand would be like an okay amount to like?
Depending on what you're trying to, depending on what you're trying to.
Not likely that, that whole section, subdivision development, those.
Yeah, that can mess, yeah, I mean, that, that's, that's what I'm saying, the subdivision stuff could cost you, you know, fifty grand. But if you're, you're just talking about, oh, we just need to clean up something here and there, and, well, yeah, that's, a lot of that can be done by staff, I mean, other than being legal.
Are you talking about what we talked about two years ago? I know exactly what he's talking about.
Yeah, we, so, I mean, we made a, a subcommittee. And we wrote it all out, but, I mean, literally since then, the state laws changed again. So we're like, whoa, okay, well, that's kind of.
Yeah, the state, you know, legislature has really changed how we can, how we, uh, how, how we can. Yeah, I guess, it's really changed how we process subdivision flats and timing and everything associated with that. And your code's not consistent with state law, so we're, we're, a lot of what's in your code, we're not even, like, we don't even.
Can't do.
We don't have.
What's the likelihood that we'll need a subdivision block?
Are you kidding? That's exactly what happened to the Oaks. No, that's what. In this city, our subdivision code put us in bad position with the Oaks. And a loophole in our code was used against us improperly with bad legal advice. And it resulted in what is likely going to be an approval of something that we can't.
Yeah, to, to Councilmember Bailey's point, though, um, that was like the last five acres. You know, it really is, up, up now, E T J side is like.
That's not gonna happen.
And that's what, that's in E T J, they just say, man, we're not in E T J.
Yeah, so we don't have any P D D code, that's never been added. We specifically, actually, I went through and identified all the lots of the rest of the city that aren't protected in the Brooklyn overlay. Who are still subjected to subdivision code, and because we don't have any minimum lot sizes or anything addressed in Arizona. People could literally carve up most, I think, a ton of our lots in the smaller, like, things.
Don't need to do it, it's just like, like, we do need to do it, and we need to make it a priority. But with all the changes in, in the law, and just, and then our sort of geographic makeup. Um, it should be a fairly, fairly simple process compared to Austin or Drupping. Or where they've got vast expanses of land within the city limits, you know, that are, that are completely segregated.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, maybe you don't, so, uh, you know, sometimes the big expenses associated with subdivision regulations are the. Uh, construction, the construction requirements, right? You know, how do you build the streets, how do you, all, you know, so maybe you don't need all of that, but, um, certainly your code is outdated.
Absolutely.
And not in one area, it is all over the place.
So, and I would just bit, I would just, you know, I would just budget what you think you can afford this year, and then, you know.
Do that much.
Do that much, right, you know, I mean.
So we're adding a whole chunk, twenty five thousand dollars instead of fifty or seventy five thousand.
I don't know twenty five thousand, we get you, but.
Fifty would be good, and guys, if we don't spend it, we don't spend it, right? But if we don't, the problem with. How we operated specifically this year and why there is such a big mess is because. We were allowed to overspend in areas and said, it's fine. I'll move money, and now we don't have any budget amendments to back any of that, and we cannot proceed that way. Every amount that we spend, we have to have it tied to a budget line item. And if we're intending to spend over, then our city administration needs to help us. A, understand where we are in the spending enough to be able to know if we're spending overspending, that means adequate reporting online where people can reference it. And then two, it means that if we know we're going to go over, we have a plan to ask where it's going to come from. Does that make sense? We don't have any of that in place right now.
I, I just looked up, just, this is a great example, but, um, a client where we. They engaged our planner and us to assist with what they call a commercial corridor rewrite. Where they took, they just did a comprehensive plan, and then they took the elements to comprehensive plan that applied to the commercial corridor. And this was a city with a very small commercial corridor, it's mostly residential. And, uh, we assisted with doing that, that was about a fifty thousand dollar profit. And it was just a small commercial corridor zoning rewrite, that's all.
So, but, but we kind of brought back some of our notes from the subcommittee and.
I'm trying to get them to him.
Yeah, it's like, how many, how many, how many public events are you gonna have, how many, how, 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 how come they have to be present, you know? It's, it's all, some may be easy, some may be, you know, bigger and sparer.
Okay, so fifty thousand in, in theory there, um, we addressed Oakwell Events. Uh, plan for, oh, drainage plans, hello, the giant elephant in the room, nobody talks about.
So where did that money go?
There.
What money?
It's still reserved, the four twenty-five.
It's in the reserves.
Has to be.
It'll, unless, well, it does, it's, so everything reset, right, it all just goes bloop, and it'll sit in an account that says podag or. Whatever, so it's not like it could be.
The four twenty-five or twenty-nine?
Four twenty-nine is sitting in an account, ready to be spent on drainage, right? So we need to put, okay, drainage and capital permit four twenty-nine, but guess what, guys, that's not even room, hopefully enough, and.
Right.
Because, yeah, we're.
Sorry, it's seven twenty-six.
Definitely with what the, um, city engineers were kind of showing us. Like even our smaller project to deal with the flooding in that specific area, yeah, and we've been, like the city attorney saying about certain things. Yeah, four twenty-nine is maybe gonna touch during the smaller. So.
Did that put the item committee kind of determined?
Did they have a number when it comes to drainage, for just one small little area?
No, it could be in millions, probably.
Millions and millions.
Yeah.
Millions.
But I mean.
And we don't have, like, we just put in place a road bond, we may not have the resources to float another bond for millions.
Oh, we will, and what did they say, it was like two to three years, it might not be millions, but we, we, the way we set it up with bond council. Was, it's stair stepping and going to give us equity to borrow, or like, room again, to, and, I mean, it's, we. We wouldn't even necessarily have to go out to bond for that, too, you.
A million.
Maybe we'll get more. To go on board then, so that's.
Well, we can get a branch or something, but, um, yeah.
Go to state agencies.
You can also take out tax notes and whatever thing, so we, we can, we will, in a few years, have stairs stepped down to have. Borrowing capacity again, which would allow for maybe a million dollar tax note or something like that. Um, those don't go to voter approval, but we love voter approval, so you could, you can go to bond again, is what they told us.
I think what we do is go to the state, say, you know, what are our options, say, would any kind of matching, that we may need a million dollars or a matching grant. Because I'm, I mean, I've heard numbers like fifteen million dollars to, you know, take care of things, and this.
And we're thinking about the bond into that.
Gutters and sewers, that's just fifteen million bucks.
We'll take two hundred thousand a year.
So literally, given the scope, um, the four twenty-nine that we have. That could literally be us getting organized this next year to go towards.
Maybe, the, the one of the things that we keep.
Yeah, we're taking.
Kind of missing in all of this is all of that's about gray infrastructure, all of those numbers are gray, meaning cement. Pulvers, metal, right, more concrete, more, 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 nobody until Cleveland Turd has entertain, entertained. Green infrastructure with us, so if we approach this from a green perspective, there is a real possibility. We can actually address drainage citywide in a much cheaper fashion than more concrete.
So, do you think that number, the?
I really don't know, I just, like I said, it was in my notes and I was like, you missed it, we gotta put that back, at very least, carry it over in the capital improvements to say. Hey, we still plan to start dealing with drainage somehow, yeah, I have it in that, that was my last note, besides those sinking funds we keep talking about, we need to figure out how to do that. We had one for land acquisition, we talked about capital improvements, and, um. That was covering the road stuff, but we might wanna make sure it's designated road maintenance versus just capital improvements. Kevin said, oh, it's all capital improvements, but I was like, I don't know, I think I would like to. You know, kind of tease those out, but we need to talk to whoever we end up hiring on that front to understand how we establish our sinking funds. So, I mean, at the end of every budget year, whatever we didn't spend in that item gets dropped down to, into an account automatically. Versus going back into the big pool, and so then it basically commits future councils to. Hold to our maintenance, our street maintenance plan, all of this should be based on the comp plan, right, that's where these ideas came from. So the comp plan backs these sinking funds and helps commit future councils to long-term plans for their cities, so that every time we have an administration change. We don't cut ourselves at the knees with these capital investment programs that take millions of dollars, right? That's kind of what put us in a bad spot on our streets is for thirty-plus years, nobody had a plan. You know, there was no consistent, agreed upon, voted, street maintenance and, and improvement plan that, that helped. Through administration, and we need to get away from that, that's not ideal, right, so, that was it, those, gonna add. We're gonna pass the budget with the following amendments, if y'all want me to bring it on the screen, I can, but we're gonna knock code administration out from professional services and add a comp plan for twenty grand. We're gonna add an additional legal line for code updates of fifty thousand.
Which brings us to a hundred thousand in the red.
And then we talked about adding a contingency emergency reserve fund of fifty thousand. And putting the drainage of four hundred twenty-nine thousand back into our capital improvement projects. Now, are you, you confident about number four twenty-nine?
That was four twenty-seven, please.
It came in two sections, two twenty-four something, was that right?
I think, oh, I think it was.
The tunnel that we talked about forever was a four twenty-seven.
Four twenty-seven. So I would just do four twenty-seven.
Hey, for Tim, you said, um, that your amendments were to remove code admin, add comp plan, uh, twenty thousand dollars, add a legal line was. Uh, code updates for fifty thousand and then add contingency funds, what was the rest of that?
Fifty thousand in there, and then the drainage and capital improvements, if y'all wanna project it on the screen, I can show you that one more time, it just needs to turn on, and then I think. If y'all have any further adjustments, um.
Drainage and capital improvements for four twenty-seven, is that where y'all were getting it?
Yeah.
But that should already be in it.
Yeah.
Well, it's very sure it's carried over. I just will. Just making sure it's there.
I am, yeah, covering the plan update, twenty thousand. And under general, so with the legal, can I, oh, it would be under total there, hold on.
There's legal.
Okay, I was gonna see if I could sneak it in without messing up the formula, but I'm gonna have to add a, add a. I mean, I have to redo that formula or something, um, legal code update. I know the order isn't great, guys, it's gonna be okay though.
When I can, to the extent that this is something, that, it sounds like it's something you're gonna try to undertake, I can create a separate, um.
Billing.
Invoice billing that separates. Over services out, over some, this probably, you can give two invoices, so easier to track, things staff doesn't have to break it out every single time.
That would be wonderful, because that is a pretty consistent issue right now, with kind of, uh, interpreting those, um, invoices, you know?
And if there's, if, 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 on that note, just real quick, if, if there is anything we can do better on that, that, that will help out staff and everybody, just so we can. A good deal.
I haven't heard any complaints about y'all, uh, I think it's just kind of a consistent, every time we get something from vendors and places.
A little different.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so that number, and we now has everything in it, so we'll check, that number line is B ninety-nine, B ninety-nine is there, cool.
Bingo.
Uh, and then we talked about a contingency reserve. Oh, just.
Oh, you want it's not reserve, just contingency.
Yeah, 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 emergency. Um, fifty thousand.
E N C Y.
Yes, thank you, I can, I cannot spell, I can do many things, spelling is not one of them. E N C, wait, we're giant thing, that's how I talk, okay, uh, and then again, I edit this number. And then the last one in the, boom, there you are, we're over quite a bit now. So, the contingency reserve is a funny thing because it looks bad, but may not get used. So that's an easy thing to cut, if y'all are super uncomfortable with that number, um.
Somehow it's a rough election this year, and going a hundred fifty grand over budget won't look good.
And I, you know, they're just gonna blame me, don't worry about it, I don't know.
No.
I'm kidding, uh, so here, I mean.
It's on the show.
Yeah, that's the reality of it, and a unified front, because if everybody votes the same way, then then turn on each other is frustrating, but, um.
Cool, but if you're, you know, you're remodeling your house, and you want this new thing this year. And you, you can only do one or two things a year, you don't need to do them all, seems like we've added a lot of expenses. I just wanna point that out, but it.
Well, the contingency fund is a normal fund, that's always been there, and the, the projects that we're looking at are the things that are. You know, we had the comp plan in front of us, the review of it, and walking trails in particular was a big part of what the citizens walk for us. We're just kind of continuing on with the comp plan.
The ordinance fifty thousand, that's nothing.
That's one of those, like, we inherited these ordinances that literally point to nowhere, or.
We've been systematically working through a lot of it, to be honest, but basically, when we got to the land usage stuff.
It is so much.
It's massive, and then it's a massive file number, still trying to even get to Charlie, and then it's, you know, then, then it's multiple meetings of us consulting. And trying, him, their, their team trying to understand what council is wanting in addition to the state code requirements, and that's just one chapter. Of our code, right, and the most important one, but.
We just heard our city attorney say that our, our codes are, um, and need to be, they need to, and so. The overhaul has been, we've been talking about it at least for three years before, um, and maybe we don't get it all done. In one, twelve, fifty grand, or maybe we spend half of that and then carry it over and keep going, you know, next year, but. But you've gotta, you've gotta at least put a number down, you know, get a budget together, then say, okay, this is, this is, this is the, the proposed budget. That's not the final budget, so, I mean, if, if, if a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars sticks. In our, in our craw, as like it does mine, um, then the first thing you do is go and say, okay, what, what if.
What do we do with that?
I mean, this is important, we need it, we know we need that, so what, what do we cut to make that happen? What do we, what do we, you know, what are we, what's that nice to have, you know, versus what we really need? And so that's just gonna take some, some studying and some, some work, but I think that we can come up with, yeah, a fair amount.
So we're gonna have a public hearing regarding this in the next, the next two weeks?
No, so we actually have to get the tax stuff first, and then once we have that, we actually, um. We can actually have more workshops, you don't have to go straight into a public hearing, uh, we can actually work on the budgets a little bit more to enter into. The public hearing where we announce our proposed tax rate and then the proposed budget.
And our proposed tax rate, we may say, hey, listen, we need to, we need to get a little bit more money and cover some of these things, and so. And so we're not gonna be able to lower taxes again, maybe we have to keep the same original a little bit.
The other thing to note for sure, I believe we are under on our revenue, specifically our taxes, I believe, I, based on what cycle projected, I think we're. I mean, it's not like I cover everything, but I know, I think we're like twenty grand, at least, maybe forty grand under on that. Uh, and what's even scarier, y'all, is that the reserve fund transfer is even bigger than that, if we do all of our capital improvements. I don't know if y'all know if that, but it's actually a massive one, and I don't love this, um, but. You know, this is meeting all of the things that we have established our priorities based on.
This is kind of the first round.
Yeah.
Big dream, and then we slowly.
Real.
Real.
That's, that's reality, yeah. Reality vibes.
So I, I wanna verify that when this proposed budget is being posted on the city budget, like the cover sheet that's required.
There are cover sheets that does with it.
Y'all have to pick which one and fill out the form.
And mayor does that?
He's a budget officer.
Okay, guys, is, I mean, if, if y'all are wanting to make some cuts now, we need, um, like, information on what to do, we're just saying, I don't like this. Isn't helping me, you know?
Well, well, what I was saying, I spent a lot of time on the budget, and I was thinking, we're gonna get balanced, and so I went line by line and compared. And I was like at break even, and now we're a hundred and fifty thousand under, I mean, so. As we went along, there were categories I thought, well, we're pushing that up, maybe we can push some of the ones down, maybe. I projected three hundred sixty-five thousand on tax, and we put in three fifty, maybe we've got fifteen thousand to add in. But I also think we bumped up categories that maybe we can bump them back down.
So we put three sixty-five back in the taxes, maybe got a little bit more after it.
Okay, and I do think that's correct, right?
Uh, can I, can I, I mean, are we gonna go all the way back to this budget again?
No. First, I'll be. Look, is the changes that you're, we need to vote on the. City hall maintenance and repair. Is all of this.
Do we need to?
Yeah, I thought we, I thought we had said that, you know, what we're trying to do is, is put the numbers together, the wishlist. We've got a proposed budget that we can, perhaps, we wanna come back in a, in a special meeting before the nineteen, we can.
Yeah, on time.
And we have plenty of time.
Next week, right.
Um, you know, we can do that, but, you know, as it stands right now, you know, we've got something to work with, and then you can go back and, and work on it. And, and, and come up with their own numbers, and we come back and talk it through, but I don't.
The other, I mean.
I'm budgeting it out.
Yeah, well, I mean, in fifteen minutes, I'm gonna venture toward it. Yeah, the reality is, is two meetings where this is supposed to happen, this didn't happen, and I'm sorry, and I'm tired, too.
Excuse me.
The reality is, is whatever we vote on is going to be published, so if you don't like the way this looks, then we need to come up.
It's gonna be published, I think.
Right, so we either need to call, we need to all vote and say we're gonna have another meeting, or we just tweak a little now and get it done, I mean.
I, I, I think that for us to sacrifice and have another meeting next Wednesday at four o'clock, something like that, will, will be much more fresh. And ready, if we can get a copy of this tonight again, as it is right now. Then I think we will have a worksheet to work with and be able to do something like that, um, perhaps Wednesday for two hours, and we get two hours from four to six.
Suzanne, what's?
Oh, excuse me.
Sorry.
I was watching Jack.
What does Wednesday look like for the city?
Wednesday, I don't believe there's any names on Wednesday, the, we have. Parks got moved up from the twenty-fifth to the eighteenth.
Yeah.
Um, but, then we get.
I mean, you can pull the contingency and just float with the program of, if we need something, we budget amendment and draw, that makes it look better. You can adjust the code plan because right now, a lot of that's covered in general legal, and chances are, general legal would dip. Because they're not doing all of those code updates under that thing, so you can make an adjustment there, um.
Maintenance and repair, we went from eight thousand to twenty thousand, that's for the city hall. Our first, we went from eight thousand to twenty, there's just these categories, we went on ten on accounting. For forensic accounting, we put in thirty thousand, these. For forensic accounting, we put in thirty thousand. These are things we're putting some, some progressive things, but all in one year. I don't want to have the citizens that aren't that, so.
Okay, so if we tweak, if we tweak, tweak the legal code update, we tweak the general legal back down to thirty? Knowing that likely a lot of what we've been filling to general are, is that a bad idea? I don't know.
FYI, you're about to get a letter of the century and you get about a three and a half percent increase or it's ready.
Is that just for us? Are we special or?
Um, no, everybody's, everybody's getting, well, some are getting larger, so you're absolutely.
So we can actually, maybe we'll scale back the code update and focus on key areas, thirty grand. And then you're saying the arborist is too high.
Well, we added something there, so, yeah, and we tweaked code, I mean.
Well, that's because we came to the understanding that the amount we had isn't attracting anyone.
As including the local specialists.
But maybe we can knock it down to eighteen thousand. Yeah, because that's the two, eight grands and then two grand more to attract maybe the arborist, the ten grands, if that makes sense. Um, you didn't like, uh.
Probably the city repair.
Okay.
I'm gonna, no, I'm gonna approach that one.
But we could reduce to fifteen.
Yeah.
And if we need a budget amendment, we need one later, but, yeah. Okay, so that's a little walking that in, I suppose. Let me remove the contingency. Uh, now we only need fifty-three. Uh, let me put this here.
Okay, accounting, thirty thousand. That's it, a brand new item.
Now our total transfers are a little bit more like what they've been in years past. And that's only if all of these capital improvements happen and at these rates.
And we're putting in, now we need twenty-nine thousand for municipal court.
Right.
We haven't had municipal court.
But this is a hopeful quality of.
We've put in, we've put in a budget for the municipal court now for.
Yeah, twenty-two thousand last year. So, um.
And that's.
I'm just trying to.
Mayor Person, what did you change the city hall maintenance budget to?
Fifteen thousand. You'll have this whole new copy of this document and it, I mean.
Don't make the amendment.
So, yeah.
To be these edits.
Yeah, I'm trying to just.
To be these edits. So you'll have this document and the old document.
So it will be a specific line-by-line motion? It'll be a?
Line hit.
Add edited.
Add edited.
As edited during council meeting.
Mm-hmm. And we're doing it live together, so, I mean, I can, I don't know. So right now, I think it's a lot prettier. Uh, there, the, this city have never had a zero-zero budget. Does that make sense? There has always been a transfer of.
Okay.
No, but there.
That's much better, I think.
It's, that's, this is not cra- crazy. Fifty-three thousand is probably one of the lowest transfers we've ever projected.
And I was just looking at another, and we might have another twenty-five thousand in water for the noise speeds.
Coming.
Coming up now.
No, no, so I mean, there's.
Yeah.
I was just looking at things that were exceptional for this year in a group of scale. So we had, thank you, that works.
Do y'all have any other edits you wanna make? Or y'all would say, y'all wanna recap the edits that remain?
I'd like to move forward.
We can just print it, right?
Yeah, I'm just gonna delete the extra things that we decided tonight. Include forensic possibility, but orderly. Orderly. A R.
Orderly.
Um, you're okay.
Who are you?
Hey, you guys feel free to type in front of everybody on the screen.
I'm glad they were like, we're just looking.
Don't we turn the, don't we turn the TV off?
No, no, we need it, we need it. Um, cover, oh, no, I didn't edit that. That was good. Yeah, how do I get that? Okay, so we need that. So, anything else? We don't need this anymore. Uh, we don't need that anymore.
Matching grant funds.
Matching grant funds. That's an easy one to make a cut if we're really.
Oh, I'm looking at that screen, Mike.
What I'm saying is it's an unknown and it's an, it's an unknown that we're just hypothetically planning for, so it's an easy one to.
Yeah, you can go back and. Pulled up from reserves.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a good reserve.
Alrighty.
So.
Take it away.
Twenty thousand, we're not taking it away. Just put it, yeah.
Soaking it.
But without an actual plan in place, it is kind of hard to like.
Yeah, well, it's hard to argue, but hey, we're gonna take some money out of the reserves.
Three thousand six hundred eighty-five dollars. Where do we, or twenty, what do we have left? Twenty-three thousand? Are we gonna be able to find it? No, probably not. Are you okay with this now?
Okay. I've been, yes.
Seven copies?
No.
It looks like I'm gonna copy.
Oh, yes, no, no. I don't wanna, I'm gonna copy some of this.
No. No. You pay for budgets.
Well, she printed the first one. That's why I was, that's why I said that.
Because I knew in the meeting we'd probably end up having to talk about this stuff. I just, the crazy thing is, is I'll probably remember four more things before the next meeting. And that'll be that. Alright, uh, we can actually focus now. Y'all don't need this.
Need to vote on the.
Yes, so, um, the motion on the table is what?
The proposed budget.
Yeah.
I made the motion and then we, then we, then we amend the, the budget with all the things that we've just spoken about. And, uh, go forward at, at this new, uh, with this new budget, um, amount of, you're too fast and can't read it. Forty-three thousand, um, six hundred eighty-five dollars as, as the.
The negative.
The negative.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so vote first on the amendments, all of the amendments.
How many amendments have there been?
Several, on several amendments.
Oh, they've been long.
Yeah, yeah.
The line item amendment.
Yeah.
She has one, she has one, and another amendment. This I understand.
I know that we vote on all of the amendments that we breathe on.
I think that's what he just said.
Oh.
So, so we're voting on all the amendments that we just, it's gotten agreed on the screen. That's, that's unamended. What's the other amendment? Isn't it just a motion to approve the proposed budget as amended?
I second that.
I'm not missing anything here. I approve the proposed budget as amended by Mr. Hamburg. Seconded by Councilmember Richardson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Um, any, uh, council considerations for the next regular council meeting? Communication perhaps? To a communication as a possible workshop?
Um, possibly the fund balance policy and procurement policy? Um, yes. Because the two go hand in hand. I just need them in a formal document format.
A sweepover report. I remember last Monday about thirty minutes, I think it was. Uh, I have two items that have been pending for a while. They were previously submitted, but they might come out mainly. Uh, one of them is for rainwater collection on city-owned properties, and the other is for a bathroom at Creek Side Park. I solicited proposals for an onsite build.
Mr. Hamburg? Come on, I'll wait. I'll be waiting until after our meeting next week. Any else? Any nonsense?
Um, if, can you receive our hot wild?
Yeah.
Invite.
Okay, that's September thirteenth. Everybody threw it on the calendar.
It is, I've, I've never been, I mean, um.
It's awesome.
But, 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 yeah, but I'm gonna take, I was talking, we've, I guess we were having our Wood Creek Member League meeting shortly after or sort of before, and I said, you didn't, you didn't go, man. It's great. You can't miss that. So it's an educational program with lots of fun, right?
Yes, yeah, it's, it's free for our clients and even folks who aren't, and it's a one-day event and it's in shirts this year and like it was last year, I believe. And, um, it starts in the morning and ends in the afternoon with cocktails, and in between it's, um, presentations on uh, items of interest for council members and employees of the city and such.
So I thought you were talking about the place hot wild? Which is very, very fun.
Very.
I have not been to there, thinking.
Well, ours is very, very fun too, so. Yeah, you know, I'll catch me there and I'll tell you why it's called Hot Wild.
Okay. So, then the motion to a.
Motion to a.